David.
Yeah.
We'll get none of this done ahead of time. Actually, I'm gonna... Any day we're pushing this side of the dirt is a good day.
Exactly, yeah. It's with my neighbor Al Olson, just remember him?
Oh, very well.
Yep, he's a nice man.
Yep.
Say any day above ground is a good day.
As you get older, you don't appreciate that statement.
Exactly.
Why is the syllabus back on the agenda?
Because if you read down, Father Danicker has approached us to see what... Look in your notebook, uh, somewhere down there.
Mike, did you look at my second revision?
I just barely burned it.
Is that all right?
There was no intentions of mine.
Yeah, but we looked at it as well.
Yeah. Yep. I had a chance, I had a chance to look at it, but I haven't talked to Mel.
Mel must have copies of it.
And we, so we haven't had a chance to talk, that's...
Talk the second revision.
Yeah. You see the second revision?
Yeah, I scrolled back to her.
I didn't see it.
Yeah, there was only one little change, I suggest.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yes, 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 yes. And then I got a revision after, I got...
I got the one with same has...
Yeah, changed it back to same. But I, I don't wanna, it's, it's not on the agenda, I don't wanna, I'm not the intention.
Alright, I think I had it on the agenda, but we can...
Oh, did we?
I do, I think it's there, but we can...
I don't have copies.
So just get deferred to the next...
Let's see how we make out.
Oh, okay, it's fine. I have, uh...
Oh, the other one?
How many you need? Randy needs one.
That wasn't in the packet?
No, it wasn't.
Maybe it must've came, maybe it came the day late after or something, but...
Oh, yeah, remember we had that discussion, it came on Fri- it came on Monday, and then I promptly left out of the house.
Oh, there it is, okay.
I gave it to Michelle, and she's got the old waters out.
Okay.
She said, should I just put it in there and say this, say this down?
Dial one eight hundred Neil, or give it a few seconds.
I, you know, I'm excited to see him here, and I saw him yesterday afternoon, and he wasn't coming, so I have the impression that he'll be here.
Did he take the bus today?
He, the bus should be fine by now.
You have a cell, Mike?
Yeah.
Under threat of death.
Uh-oh.
No, I'm only kidding about the death. Hey, should we put you on, should we put you on speakerphone, or are you nearby? Okay, um, six thirty, yeah. No, we were trying to start at six thirty, so that we were giving, gonna give it a, an hour and a half, but, um, we, you know... So what do you think ETA?
This one.
You think five minutes, ten minutes?
No.
Was that what, that's what it was, right?
Okay, um... Uh, let me see if mine, let me see if people, I don't want you to get caught, picked up, or, or have an accident. Hang on, let me see if I know how to operate this thing. You there?
I'm here.
Okay. We'll get started, you keep coming, and if we get at a point where you can't hear us, you let us know.
Alright, will do, appreciate it.
Alright, the modern of techno, you know, technology at its best. We're gonna wait for, we, uh, we gotta wait for, uh... It's on vibrate, so... Uh, we gotta, Joan's not here yet, we really need her to take notes.
Yeah, she had a phone call, she had a cellphone, here she is, she's here.
You still there, Neil?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll call the meter, the work session to, uh, to order, um, and I'd like to cut right to the quick and, uh, go right to the memorandum that was to the city council dated August eighteenth, two thousand nine. Um, and I'm actually gonna depend on Neil and Mel a lot to help steer us in the right directions and answer the questions, um, and, and Jason as well, he's here. There were some questions that arose from a, a, a letter from David, uh, to the board of aldermen, myself, Mel, and the planning commission, and what we did is, I think we pretty much addressed it, so, um... You, should we go right to, uh, supporting our people, number one, and, and talk about that, and, and hash it out, so if there's any other?
Yeah, I, uh, you know, obviously, the planning commission went through every item that, that Dave brought up and may have, may have revisited others that were outlined in the, in the January, in the, in the July fifteenth memo, so, uh, I'm not sure if at the last meeting you were able to make your way through all of the items, uh, of the July fifteenth, uh, but anyway, uh... Hopefully, I mean, maybe this is self-explanatory, I could tell you that it really was a good meeting. David, uh, and, and the mayor attended the planning commission, you know, a lot of discussion, uh, might've been some items to, you know, kind of agree to disagree on, but basically tried to find some language that was acceptable to everyone, uh, you know. Some of the items, you know, some of the items, I think, are, are more corrections than anything else, so, uh... The, I think the, the, the idea related to so-called design review standards, or the use of the words "design review", uh, the, the feeling that what that means is that the board, that there's gonna be some design review board and very specific design review standards. Uh, that's not what the, what the intent of the planning commission, and so you'll notice in here, uh, uh... Making reference to clarify the intent of the planning commission, alright, 'cause I think that the worry, I think in Randy's words, you're really worried about, you know, somebody's gonna take this document, yeah, that's what you folks intend, somebody's gonna take this document, not understand the intent, and gonna go off in some other direction, and so they've, the, the board worked up this in- intent language as to what these standards were, were supposed to, uh, were, in essence, were intended to do. And hopefully, that, uh, I think the planning commission is hoping that that can provide some comfort to the council as to, as to what the document was, really was intending to do. Uh, on the one hand, yes, it clearly was intended to protect, uh, you know, protect the character, historic character of the downtown, but not to the point where, you know, where they're regulating shutters and paint color and, and, uh, that. It's just to really assure, uh, you know, that the integrity is, is kept intact and, you know, harmonious relations, uh, harmonious relationship, uh, you know, amongst the properties and protect our historic neighborhoods.
One of the examples that was given was if the Stephen House was to disappear for whatever earthly reason, we wouldn't want a Butler Building, which is a steel building, to go up in its place. That would not look within the character. Uh, it was discussed whether it had to be two floors or not, uh, there was verbiage in there, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, "highly recommended", or in some cases, "it is our goal", so we use that type terminology, realizing that there may be some cases where people just aren't gonna be able to financially support it, but we want to try to maintain the character of the area in, in which, uh, whatever devastation happens to hit. So, and, and that's pretty much was the crux back and forth on, on a lot of the issues, so, um... What? Go ahead, Neil. Sure, go ahead.
I just said, uh, just to let the council know that the, the planning commission was, pretty, after some discussion, was pretty unanimous, what was unanimous, um, about the, what was outlined in that memo, so it, we all felt pretty comfortable with it.
Do you, do you feel more comfortable with, uh, going, like, number one, and go down and go to page, uh, seventeen on number seven and, and looking at that, just for clarification, you wanna do it in that manner, um? Is, is that how you'd like to proceed? So, I wanna do this in a manner that everybody's totally comfortable and, and we don't miss any points. That's the way? If that's the case, let's open the book to page seventeen, um, policy number seven. Okay, Mel, help me out here, is...
Yeah, it's, number seven is where we, the, the planning commission recognizes that the board, uh, that the city council has a resolution as it relates to, uh, the taxation of, of, uh, residential rental property. Uh, also, I think that, you know, the, the planning commission understands that, you know, that Vergennes, you know, already has, you know, you know, has more than its fair share of subsidized units, so the, you know, the board took David up on his idea of just eliminating the, including subsidized unit from that, and, and the rest of it reads, you know, reads fine.
So, we're talking about deleting subsidized units?
That's correct.
I think you also have to be a little bit careful, if, if you start blocking certain things in certain manners, in certain documents, you may block yourself out of certain grants or other funds, so you, you gotta be careful of the wording, and I, I think they're on target here, not, not damaging it.
Well, the, for instance, the, the housing, the senior housing project, you know, this goal, uh, even with taking out including subsidized units, still, still is a goal that supports senior housing. I mean, it is, it is low-cost housing, so it, uh, it can still provide that support.
Any questions or other questions or comments on number one? If not, we'll go to number two. Economic concerns that policy number six on page twenty-three, let's go to page twenty-three and number six. And Mel, go ahead.
Yeah, ba- basically, number six, I could remember flagging, flagging this one as well, and, and, you know, there was a time when Vergennes taxed, uh, personal property, business, business, machine and equipment, and we did away with it. So, and also, uh, right now, you know, we actually have a state property taxes that relates to edu-, you know, there is a state education property tax, a non-residential property, so really, when you look at this thing, investigate the possibility of offering reduced property tax assessments for new small business. I can tell you that, that obviously, you know, we don't tax personal property, so, you know, we've already gotten rid of that, uh, relative to, uh, the education portion, the way that it works in this day and age under the law, that if we were to give a property tax assessment break for a particular property, you, you have to, unless you had legislative approval, the, the taxpayers would have to make up the difference of the education tax. So I think really, this, uh, you know, I think it's, you know, it's, it's, it's nice to, you know, to, to say something here that wanna do something for new small business, but I can tell you, you can't do it with, you can't do it with the property tax assessment 'cause you're not in control of seventy-five percent of the bill, so we just think that it just really, uh, uh... It, 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 it's a real short investigation, so you might just well remove it. There's other things, obviously, that we can do, uh, you know, relative to our, you know, we have a revolving loan fund, hopefully, we can grow that fund, those are the things that we can, you know, that we can do for small business, but, but again, you know, relative to education property taxes, you know, it's not, it's, it's not in your, uh, your arena.
No problem. That's why we have technology. Um, any questions, comments, concerns about number two? Hearing none, we're going to go down to historic neighborhood districts, the HND. There were some concerns regarding, uh, potential putting the city in a position regarding histor- his- yeah, details and constructions, so what we'd like to do is, this, this is a recommendation, and I'll turn it back to Mel. Page seventy-five, please, uh...
Yeah, I think the real critical point here, when you really get the magnifying glass, uh, out, that the words "defining features", I think some people were feeling that define, you know, what, what are we talking about when we're referring to defining features? Are we talking about the trim along the cornice, are we talking about the style of windows? And so the planning commission put this, uh, included an addition to that sentence to clarify what they were talking about. When they're, when they're talking about defining features, they're talking about the, the small lots, the short setbacks, the yard depths and tree-lined sid- sidewalks as being the defining features, and not, not necessarily the, you know, the color, the, the colors that people, you know, wanna paint their buildings, or, again, uh, again, the trim. So that was to try to clarify what the, what the planning commission's intent was.
So their intent is to...
For setbacks and everything were different than most of them because of it being a historical... In a historical region, I mean, is that what you're coming up with?
In the historic neighborhood district, yes, you know, you know, where...
Waving setbacks.
As you know, there is a big difference in, in the lots, like in Crosby Farm, newer lots, compared to parts of the, the older residential neighborhoods, and although the, you know, our regulations were written after a study that we did, we relaxed some of the regulations as it relates to accessory buildings, what this is really intended to do is to take it one step further, uh, so that, so that when a house, uh, you know, is, is torn down in a, in our historic neighborhood, that, that the replacement house, you know, relate to the other houses around it, you know, that, that, so that it kinda lines up in the front, and it might be, uh, it would fit in and not necessarily be out of character by getting the set, by getting, uh, lot size, setbacks, yard depths, uh, in line with, in line with the neighborhood.
Setbacks, yards, setbacks and all that, but what about, like, say, if you have a two-story house and it burns, are they gonna be able to put a one-story, or they're gonna have to go back to the two-story?
There isn't anything in here that says that they couldn't do that. This document is, is, still maintains broad language, different from the central business, then we'll talk about that in a minute, but this, this neighborhood district, the way that this is written, it does not say that, and I'm not gonna say that that won't come up at some point during, during zoning, uh, reviews, but this document isn't saying that.
Other comments, questions, discussion? So we're okay with this, at this, we're okay with everything up to this point for now? Sure.
The zoning, and if you get to the zoning part, will this say, well, wait a minute, we've gotta refer back to the city plan on this, like, this one thing here, so I thought that the zoning had to, you had to make new rules and regulations off from what the city plan is, so isn't this kinda ambiguous, one way or the other?
It's broad, yeah. I, uh, it's broad.
And it's okay that it's broad at this point. My intent was to remove anything from this language that would require a multi-story building, or require...
But yet, it still can be referred back to this.
Can be referred back to, but this here, with regard to historic neighborhood district, I'd agree with Mel, there's nothing in it here as it's currently changed. See, my, my fear is, is that we'd get this document and we would get to the point where we're look, they're looking at zoning regulations, and you refer back to it, and, and no matter what you'd like to do, your hands are tied because this document specifically calls for something. So the language here, I, I think it's okay.
Right.
Mayor, just...
So the historic neighborhood district is one that is newly created, or that they're proposing, that, that the, the planning commission proposes a new, um, designation of this district to, to recognize the differences, and in the definition of this on the page prior to that, really is where the language for the bullet that you're talking about comes from, and that's, we sort of defined that district by saying that the high-density neighborhoods are fully developed and characterized by, um, historic homes, usually with small lots, shorts setbacks, yard depths, so in order to sort of ferret out what it was that we were talking about when we got to the next page and talked about that, um, uh, character and the development of that, those, those things that are valued or define that areas, that's what we went back to and tried to re, you know, rehash and say, that's really what we're talking about. And so I think when, um, by hitting it in a couple of different places, it, it does sort of give more, and it is broad, but it definitely does not say clearly that we're talking about two-story buildings being two-story buildings, or, um, um, you know, a column remaining a column and not a, a, a block post, um, you know, there are, there are, um, we're not talking about, um, any of those things, and I think that, that we tried to do the best that we could to clarify that, but to, to recognize that there is value to, we have an example over on West Main Street where the, I told you last time, or we spoke about this last time, where, um, the setbacks that are in the medium-density, um, resi- uh, resident, medium-dess- residential density district, um, didn't allow for the type of development that actually fit in with that character, and it created conflict with residents in our community, so it's not a, we didn't come up with this whole cloth. This was an actual, sort of, um, looking to address the issues that we think will come up in the future, as well as ones that have already come up, to allow for the type of development that, that doesn't, that the medium-density residential district today doesn't allow for, so we're trying to say, in this district, the setbacks are different than in other districts. So when you go to create that regulation that isn't yet there, there is nothing that speaks to our, in our current zoning regulations that speaks anything about the historic neighborhood, but when you go to create that, those are the types of things we want you to look at, and we want you to be aware of and, and to respect, or to, to really, you know, that's what we value. That's that.
I think too, that, um... The way that it's written with, you know, as Jason mentions in the definition, sort of on the historic neighborhood district, and then again, in this particular bullet, what we're talking about, lot size, setbacks, yard depths, sidewalks, and this kinda thing, that by spelling those things out, it gives real direction to where those zoning regulations ought to go. Yes, it's broad, and, um, you know, sure, somebody could stand up at a zoning, uh, public hearing or public input session or whatever and say, "We oughta have two-story buildings there", that's a stretch with the way that this is written. It's a stretch, because it, because the language really does kinda say, "small lots, setbacks, this kinda thing", I mean, that's what the goal is. Somebody could come, you know, we could come up with all sorts of other things in the regulations that may have to do with this bullet, um, but ultimately, what's driving the regulations is what's written here, and, uh, and this stuff needs to go through, the, those zoning regulations need to get passed by the city council down the road, so you're, this is what you has a, has the authority that approves the zoning regulations, this is what you have to fall back on to say, "You know what? This is what we had in mind when we passed the town plan", the city plan, excuse me.
Think anything more, or are you, are you satisfied, or do you have some other direction that you would like to see this cha- change?
No, no, it's just, uh... I know, not now.
No, 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 I mean, here's, here, this, now is the time, if you aren't satisfied, let's get it out and talk about it and, and see where that needs to go, because, uh...
I was just asking that question, because, you know, it is kinda open, so, and I know Chris had asked one time about her house, so that's why I was, I thought about that, so I was wondering...
The thing that I think we're, and maybe I'm speak, speaking wrongly, correct me if I do, we just, if, if something happens to her house, we, we just don't want a house trailer to go back in on the spot, a regular fourteen-foot wide by sixty or seventy-foot long, that's, that's not the setting where we wanna do that, there's nothing wrong with house trailers, but just the application, or the, 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 we want it in the right locations.
But would they be able to put a double-wide in? That's, you know, I mean, people, you come back to the, the thing of money, and, I mean, I don't like the home that's necessarily, that's up the way it's positioned on the corner across from Patton Road, um, I can't think of it.
Just between Jan Buggie and the old Woody House.
Right, right, that's what they could afford, I mean, I would've rather seen it positioned the other way, where it was facing, the front door was facing the road, but if that's what they can afford, are they gonna prevent it from putting something like that in?
Orientation would be, uh, would certainly be a part of standards, we, we talked about that actually in our orientation.
Yeah, the orientation is fine, I mean, but if they could only afford a double-wide, this language isn't gonna prevent them from doing that. 'Cause technically, it rolls in, it rolls in on wheels.
So there's modulators.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, modular and double-wides are different, but still, modular's a stick-built home, that's what that one is now, is a modular, right? That's been put up over on West Street?
Yeah, the new one. The new one's fine.
West Main?
That came, that came in on wheels, but it was like sort of stick.
No, it came in in pieces.
Yeah, sections. Everything comes in on wheels.
Well, it's, you know, this is...
Yeah, no, and I understand, you know, like, what you're saying.
What, in my opinion, what it would pertain to, um, is, um, is five words. Character-defining features and historic integrity, and it's a question of interpretation of those, and as Neil has said, he's correct in terms of the specific language would, would come later in terms of, um, of what that requires. So my opinion, it's obviously only an opinion, um, would be that with this specific language here, I wouldn't necessarily interpret it to mean that the zoning regulations would then have to specifically exclude that type of structure. They could.
I mean, they could exclude, I can understand, uh, fourteen-foot by seventy, or twenty-foot by seventy, I can understand that, but I, I, a raised ranch typically would, it could be a modular or a double-wide. It's just, it's probably semantics is what we're talking about, and I'll draw, I'll let it drop.
No, you just have concerns for the people that don't have money.
Right, well, I mean, that's, you know, I, I really do understand that, I wouldn't want, I would not prefer to have a mobile home next to me, 'cause I don't think it fits the character.
So, do we need to change anything here, or are we okay with the way it is?
Guess we'll just have to wait till the rules come out on it, zoning.
Okay, and that, again, will come through us.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. On the backside of the memo, central business, business district, um, we go down to recommendations.
What's we on, bullet four?
Uh, we're down on the pop, opposite side of that, and yes, we're down at page eighty, uh, change four, policy bullet, uh, policy bullet.
Oh, page eighty.
Page eighty. Page eighty, and, uh... Fourth one down. Mel or Neil? You'll compare what's there to what?
I don't know that I have much to add to...
Yeah, you really...
To what I've written, I'm, we're all feeling pretty, pretty confident about it, again, as I've said, it was definitely not our intention to, uh, insist that existing single-story historic buildings be replaced with two-story buildings, it just wasn't the, the board's intention. We do feel like it's good for the city to really strongly be in support of multi-story buildings downtown in terms of, uh, maximizing developable space, encouraging diversity of uses, increasing tax base, and all those sorts of things, and that's... This is language that I feel like the board felt like allowed that to happen and, and not force people to do things that, uh, were untenable. Not force people to do things that were untenable, put a multi-story building in after a building burned that they couldn't afford to replace. For example.
Back in, one of the things I pointed out, I think it was in this section, is back in nineteen thirty-something, the stone block over where he, good, uh, Three Squares is?
Those three squares.
That was three stories, it burned, so they only built, it's only two stories now, so, unfortunately, well, fortunately or unfortunately, when Fire Fifty-Eight, that block burnt, they can only afford to put back one story.
So if that happens again, will we be able to do that again?
In the event of catastrophic disaster is our goal.
See, I don't know where you're reading that, 'cause I don't have...
On the, on the memo.
Second page of the memo. Second page of the memo. Recommendations.
I got it right here.
Up, towards the top, it's a Recommendation A.
Okay.
This is our goal, is our goal- Our dream, but we're, we're not saying we require it.
So, you're not saying strongly requiring, but you're encouraging it?
The example I brought up was the fact that, um, I think it's a laudable goal, because it recognizes that there is no guidance currently in the zoning regulations as, regarding this. There's not, I mean, we are trying to address what we see as a, as a potential issue. I, we talked a bit about stewardship, and I think it's important, for me, um, that as my child or grandchild comes up in, through the city of Virgens, that they see something that looks like it is today. I mean, that, that doesn't mean that it necessarily has to be exactly the same, but that we're not looking at, um, as David said earlier, we're not, or, um, Michael said earlier, that we're not looking at, um, steel buildings in places of where, where historic buildings used to be, or, um, all just one-story buildings because a fire comes through. It's my, that, that's really what, when we were talking about this, I had in mind, I really thought that it, you know, that, that it is responsible to be able to, to try and find some solution to what could be a problem in the current zoning regulation. There's nothing, there, it says nothing, it talks about dimensional standards only in the zoning regulations. There's not, we're, we're trying to broach that hope, vision, visionary document that says, "In the future, we'd love to see the downtown of Virgens look like the downtown of Virgens." I don't, I know that it was not any more nefarious than that. We weren't trying to be, um, you know, to go around you in any way. We really are just simply saying that there's value in the way our downtown looks, feels, and we'd love to be able to, to ensure in some way that we could have that as a goal, that it looked that way in the future.
And what I, of course, telling my age, but I was here with the three, all three fires, maybe four. Okay, but anyways, you know, and again, you know, I understand what you're saying, because I thought it was bad after the drugstore used to be two stories, you know, and then we had the Adams Hardware, and that was two or three, the Corn gift restaurant, then across right between Lindaville and the chocolate store, we had three stories apartments, you know? But what happened with that, you know, say now that this happens, and we have this in place. Every time, most of the time, was because of the, the money. The situation was the money.
Well, one of the reasons I actually was in support of this as well, is we, we talked at our meeting a little bit about the fact that if this is in our plan, if this is in our, in our document that is talking about the plan for our downtown, that this could actually help property owners go out and find resources at the state level. If that's in our plan, that we value that sort of development in our downtown, and you're saying, "I can't put that building back up." As a community, we have the, the tool then in place to go out and try and find money to help a property owner, to say that we really value that building being two-story and being, so, I'd hate to see that every, every one of our buildings, if it were to have a catastrophic, catastrophic event, end up one story because of economics. I think that this actually acts as a tool to assist that property owner.
But I don't think there are grants for personal, for people owning property personally, unless it, you know, I mean, unless they got to pay it back, so they're going to go back in debt again, you know, I mean-
Possibly, it might pave the way for low-interest loans, or historic tax credits, or something. There may be some, some benefits there, but I know, I know what you're saying.
You know what I'm saying, you know?
Money's just not going to fall out of the sky.
No, it's not. And it's not saying, you know, eventually, like down on the corner where Lindaville was, you, uh, that we had the fire, there was, I don't think there was any insurance, was it, on that one?
There was a battle about whether or not there was, or there wasn't.
Right, right. You know, and then there was a space for a while, but eventually, you know, something or someone came along that probably could buy that section. I'm just saying that I don't want to see somebody who's worked all their life, maybe I'm talking about myself, and I know, like, the Jackmans and, and, and Ryans, you know, I mean, they've been here three stories, there's no way that both of them, they, they could, would go from, you know, even to two stories possibly, but there's not the insurance there. And I know, it's probably because I've been through it, and I've seen it, and I know what you're saying, but I don't know if there are going to be special grants for people, for individual owners. You know, and then all of a sudden say, "Well, no," so what happens? If they can't go two stories, you're going to say, "No, you can't build?" Is this what this is going to be about?
That's not what this, this, the language in here is, is not at all, um, to that degree.
We've absolutely heard your, your comments and your concerns, and David's comments and concerns-
Well, not just me, but the other people that were here before.
And, and addressed that in the memo. I mean, I, I really do believe that, we've addressed that. It's not, we're not requiring two-story buildings, we are strongly encouraging.
Okay. I know, but it's still vague to me. It's just that, you know-
Yeah, but it's not demanding. Vegas allows the flexibility, and, and that's where they're trying to meet at the middle. What they're hearing from you and others is, "Don't make that mandate. Give us some flexibility." So, and that, they're doing that.
Taking that to its logical end, though, that, the fact that, as a visionary document, we're saying hopefully that we'd love to see something look like this in the future, there's got to be some language, and this is what we were hopeful that this got us to, that, that suggested that that's what we would like without it being mandatory. I mean, really, we're hopeful that this says exactly what it does, that it says, "In the future, should there be a catastrophic event, it's our goal." I mean, this is, I mean, a goal is really just that. It doesn't say that it's a requirement. And when, when someone goes to read this, it's clearly, um, hopefully clear to the next zoning regulation, as well as you. I mean, when you're, when you're going through the new regulations, you'll have this plan in effect as well, to be able to say, "It was the goal of the board to do that, they weren't requiring that." So, I think that there are some opportunities, as there was in the last question, that you had, to, to really work on that specific language in, in the future, on the next rewrite of the zoning regulations as well.
All right, because it just seems so vague, and I just, I think I've been on enough boards, including real estate, zoning, planning, that the intent was there, but then all the, somehow, it always got turned around. And I just want to, we all going to be gone someday, and there'll be other people.
So, the alternative would be saying nothing, I think, because I don't really know how else to, to water down a goal. Because the, beyond that, I don't know that we would say anything, and I feel that's an injustice to, as I said, the people that, in the future, will be, this is a vision, this is, to say nothing doesn't address the issue that we saw as, as an issue, that, that in the future, we don't want to see just single-story buildings in our downtown Virgens. I, I don't know how less forceful we could, we could write language that will address what we see as an issue currently.
I don't know.
Well, we talked about this in the past, and we were hoping that if you didn't agree with it, you would bring, and Mel mentioned-
Well, I tried to get a meeting- So, we all could get on the same wavelength, but I didn't, it didn't happen. Remember, I mentioned, I asked you if we could get together?
You did.
I did.
And we had a meeting, we met last Monday night, maybe you shouldn't-
But he mentioned development, he mentioned the zoning, uh, the city council get-together. I didn't think we should be discussing it there, I would have gone.
What's, why, why do we need to draw between the sands, between us?
I didn't. He, he said-
No, I'm sorry, why, why do you feel that we need, why do you feel that we need to draw, meet different than then?
I didn't, well, but he, Mel said, you know, "The city council, you guys got to get together here to see where we're going, so we can get this done." So, I just assumed in my head that we were going to get together, had nothing to do with you guys. So, that's why I interpret literally.
Okay.
Okay? That's why I asked you.
I think the thing is, is, I mean, I'll, I'll go on record as saying that, you know, when we get to the point where we're looking at, uh, the zoning regulations that will flush out this plan, I, I will absolutely not support a requirement for multi-story building in Central Business District. And this language here, um, I mean, I understand the intent, um, and it is vague, and I think that that's probably okay, that it, that it is vague. I'm not sure what specific, I'm, I'm not sure, you know, I'm not sure what the end is in terms of, um, yeah, I mean, the plan is a visionary document, I mean, but there's nothing in there, you know, strongly encouraged really doesn't mean anything in the end. You can't, you, you couldn't really say, I, I mean, the only, you know, I've wrestled with it and tried to figure out, you know, what's wrong with that statement, you know, playing the devil's advocate. And, um, and I don't think that there's anything in there that absolutely compels this board to forward this language that requires, um, that requires multi-story buildings in the district. And I take them at their word, that it's their intent not to do that. And, and so, when you talk about strongly encourage, I mean, it's, it's probably okay.
You know, I still think it's too vague, but-
Well, that's why, well, it is, it's vague, and it has to be vague, because you can't say, in this particular case, you, you don't want them to say black, or you don't want them to say white, so you got to come to a common ground that gives some, some sort of a guidance. If, if you don't, like Jason said, if you don't say nothing at all, then you're, you're not doing justice here.
Well, and, and again, I mean, Zig- You don't want to jump ahead, but I mean, the other thing that you and I discussed, I mean, that's a more specific concern that may very well relate to height later on down, and next, not to jump ahead.
Yeah, my concern was the definition of scale. That is very broad.
Okay.
Can I just say on this, Michael, just, I feel better hearing strongly encouraged, rather than multiple-story buildings are required. So, I mean, that's what made me feel better about it, that they, that required part is out of there.
Zig, do you have any other wording that you would offer here now, that would give you a more comfortable?
No, because my recommendation was to delete the whole thing. And, so that, because I don't, maybe, I, we never need it before, and I just have concerns down the road.
And in fact, that was the same recommendation that David came to us with, um, Tuesday night, I'm sorry, Monday night last week, in his letter to us. The recommendation was that that entire, um, uh-
Bullet.
Bullet be stricken, and, and, and talking about that, and, and, again, it gets back to the first, one of the first points that I had, which is, to not, to not have anything addressing the issue is to deny that there is a possibility that the issue exists. The issue does exist. We, we, right now, under our current zoning regulations, have the opportunity for our entire downtown to be one-story metal buildings, if we had a catastrophic fire. There's nothing that prevents that from happening, or says, even in our plan, that, that we wish for that not to happen. So, I believe that this is the most watered-down way that we can say, "Our goal would be, in the event of that, that that doesn't happen." So, we can pretend it doesn't exist and eliminate the entire bullet, or we can try and find words that will allow us to get to our, our intent without, um, the slippery slope effect, without having to fear that. And I, and I think we've done a fairly good job at mitigating both of those ends, as Mi- Michael just said, trying to find that middle ground, which, which clearly shows our intent, without, uh, without forgetting that there does exist the possibility of the issue arising.
I think the other piece of it is this- Is that, you know, when you talk about, um, when you talk about the buildings in the Central Business District, I mean, um, one of the interesting things is, is that they were all constructed long before the, the advent of zoning or planning. That doesn't necessarily negate the issue that, you know, world that we live in today, we probably do need some level of regulation. But, you know, trying to look at this from all the angles, I think that, you know, what we have is this, we have, um, we have to a certain extent, you know, Ziggy, you and I that own property in that district, we deal with the economic realities of owning that property. And, and as I've said before, um, you know, if the bistro burned, and I had a requirement for it to be a two-story building, there would be a vacant lot there, because it just doesn't make economic sense. And that would be an unfortunate situation. And, and, you know, you might be in the same situation, and nobody wants to see that occur. By the same token, you've got people, whether residents, or tourists, or whoever, look at it and see it, "Wow, you know, this is an amazing thing." And that, to me, that's a good thing, you know, that people want to come here to Virgens, you know, and they, they want to walk around in our downtown, and they like being here. But at the same token, you know, it comes right down to the dollars, unfortunately. And I don't think any of us are doing it as a hobby. And, um, you know, whether, whether you'd like to do it or not, you know, I would agree with you, you know, the economic reality very, very much comes into play, particularly, probably more so in, in a, in an environment in a small town than it does other places. You know, it's, it's one thing if you have a significant population, and you have the demographics to support it, makes sense, doesn't always work here. And, um, but I still think that, that, you know, and again, I mean, I'll, I'll go on record right now, I will not support a specific requirement when we get to the zoning regulations that, that require some multi-story building in that, in the, in that district, or any other district for that matter. But I do think that this is, this is okay, here.
Well, the only reason I felt this is because I know we have a very good development view board and a good planning commission. And I thought, and because of, you guys seem to know your stuff, is that, it's like, it was like another committee coming up, that somebody would have to deal with, or, you know, another burden. And I thought, "Well, we already have, like I said, you know, you guys are really good." And I thought, "Why do we need anything else when we have you? Now that you're saying you're going to need some guidelines because of the downtown, and, and, you know, I can see where you're coming from on that, I just have concerns. And if you guys can work it out, then fine, you know, but I, that is, my main concern is that number eighty, page eighty, that one right there." Because I've seen what's happened before, I've seen people that didn't have the money that they couldn't build, and I've seen them walk away, and nothing ended up, and the city ended up taking stuff down at our expense. You know, and that's, just, don't want to see that again. And that's why I trusted you guys, because I think, you know, you're probably one of the better development view bars, including even though I was on one, that I've seen, and planning commission. And I just felt that probably would be enough, but maybe not. Oh, you're welcome.
Appreciate your comments. Ultimately, the board, the Development Review Board has, reviews projects that can only, it can only approve things that, that meet the regulations.
Right.
And we're not, we're not saying, and I completely hear David, appreciate your comments, we're, we're not requiring multi-story buildings, we've taken that out. In, in my experience, there, in, with, at least with larger developers, or, or a developer, generally speaking, that comes before the board, you know, they actually, they want to meet the regulations. Sometimes they don't always, but oftentimes, they really want to. They want to come in before us and feel proud about their application, and say, "Look, we did what you wanted to do. It's, it's the setback, it's, you know, this density, it's, we're, we're meeting what you want. Please, I hope, you know, that you'll see the thing, that you'll prove it." By not requiring that it be a multi-story building, that doesn't need to be met. But it, it does show, as Jason was saying, it does show that that's what we'd like to see, and if they read through the thing, in that district, and say, "Oh, they'd like to see a multi-story building there," and they can come in and be, and if that helps them, their application move forward, then that's a good thing, too. I mean, I, I really do view it as, as a net positive, all in all.
I don't think it's anybody's intent to create a, sort of an Act Two-Fifty situation, where we're driving people out of our city, or out of our state. I think what we're trying to do here is make a document that can be, uh, managed, and treat the, uh, our tenants, our merchants, and anybody else fairly, so we can go forward and, and still both walk away with some money in the end. We don't want all their money, we, we hope they make a fair share, but we hope the city gets their, their chunk. So, any other discussion on number eight? And again- and this is not to stifle anybody's discussion, because maybe that'll strike some other conversation like it did at the commission meeting the other night. I mean, somebody said something on a planning commission, David threw something out, or I threw something out, and we worked together through some things, some areas that, so we came, came to that common ground. And that's, we can tweak it a little bit more this evening if need be. So, we're going to go to number B, under number one. That's on page 79, the third sentence. And it's just changing some wording there. Everybody find a place? Any comments, discussion? Give you all the time you want to look at it. Go for it.
In here, it's, we have a parking problem. And if you put apartments above stores, we don't have, they don't have places to park.
That issue, I, it's kind of been a perennial issue going back to when, well, going back at least as long as I was, when I started on the planning commission, which was quite a few years ago. Parking problem is a good thing to have in a downtown. If you don't have one, it's an issue. And the, when I was on the board, we worked and we created a provision that allowed the DRB to waive parking, parking requirements in the Central Business District. And, and there's obviously different ways to interpret that. I don't particularly have an issue with it. We've got a, we've got a parking ordinance. And to me, you know, the burden of providing parking does not fall on the city, doesn't fall on the municipality. And there are people, I mean, not many, but there are people that do not own cars. And just about any other place that you go, you'll, you'll find, you'll find a lot of apartments that don't have parking associated with them. And it really is up to the, up to the tenant, and, up to the tenant and the, and the owner of the property to, to make whatever arrangements they make. That being said, I mean, there is language that allows us to regulate it. I mean, we do not want to create a situation where, you know, all of the available parking on Main Street is taken up by residential tenants. And I don't think we have that. I certainly don't want that as a merchant. But I think we're okay with that piece of it.
I'd throw out just two comments in response quickly. There is a fifth bullet on the, on the policies on page 80, has to do with parking requirements and waivers and, and this sort of thing. So we're trying to address it there, to say this is how this ought to happen. And then the descriptive language that we're talking about in this recommendation B, it is very much descriptive language of what's in the district right now. This is what exists. And we have thrown in the, the word valued, right? Again, not requiring the upper stories, but putting a little more emphasis that we value it, it's a, it's a good goal to have, not requiring, we value this.
Anybody else have questions, comments, other discussion? Are we comfortable with the change as is? All right, let's go to number two, design review standards. Number A. Mel, you want?
I think, I actually did a little word search in the plan, just to see how many times the two words "design review" popped up, and it actually popped up once. This is the only time. And if in fact, folks, I know Randy has talked about this, Zig as well, if, if the fact, if, if the words "design review" may be interpreted to result in a design review board, I think that's what, what Zig was alluding to here, is that when you have design review, many towns that has design review standards, it's, it's the creation of another level of review, where you have a design review board, you know, some towns, Middlebury, they actually have a, a, a design review board, but it's, but they don't really regulate, but they, you have to go through this design review board, and they write some authorization or recommendation on a particular project. This in no way is contemplating another board. It never was intended to create another, another board. So I think to, the idea of getting rid of those words, and therefore never shows up in the document, therefore there's no, no one is implying the creation of a design review board, some other layer of, of review. Hopefully, this will allow the council to be more comfortable with, with what's being said here, along with the, again, at one point, we were going to put this in parentheses, and we, it's not in parentheses, it's, it's not parenthetical, it's crystal clear, or attempt to be crystal clear about, it is specifically not the intent of this plan to regulate windows, siding, roofs, and color. So you'll notice that that's a repeat of the same thing. I think Joe brought it up at, at one of the meetings about, about wanting to have the, have the planning commission in areas where it appeared to be needed to clarify and actually state the intent. So that's the modification to that bullet there.
Zig?
None.
Nothing? Okay, so you're comfortable with that?
Ziggy, what was the concern you had with regard to the word "scale"?
Well, I think they clarified it. My, the word "scale" was, you know, like the same footprint. I kind of looked it up legally and all over, and it could also mean the same footprint as was there before, you know.
Scale actually can cut both ways, Zig.
Cut both ways, right.
You know, scale, I think, is like scale, appropriate scale, appropriate volume, and that's what scale, I mean, you know, you know, someone could, could propose a building that is just way too large. It's out of scale because it's too large. So it's about making sure that, it's an attempt to say that it, that it basically fits, you know, that it's, it's of appropriate scale for, for the downtown.
My concern was that there was a building in a certain feet, and then all of a sudden something come along and it had to be a little smaller, you know? This word "scale," well, you're going to have to go to scale, the existing scale. That was my concern on that. Like you say, it could be go either way. So, see what I'm saying?
As David, we talked a lot about it at the last meeting, we were talking about getting to dimensional standards. I think scales can be defined in dimensional standards when you talk about height restrictions. But when you talk about, when you talk about it in this context, when it says to maintain the look, feel, and scale of our current downtown, as I read that, it doesn't say that a two-story building has to be a two-story, that, it doesn't mean the scale of that building has to remain the scale of that building if it were replaced. David's property is a good example. There is, in our current downtown, a very, it looks much like the rest of the downtown, but it's a one-story building. So we're saying the scale of that fits in with the rest of the downtown. It doesn't say it has to be a two-story building to be in the same scale. It just says that when you combine all those words, look, feel, and scale, that in fact it could be there. And I think scale can be a dimensional, something that you clearly define in dimensions as far as standards go. So you avoid what Mel's talking about, those monstrosities that are 15 sto, you know, Burlington's dealing with scale when they're talking about their downtown height restrictions. We're, we're going to do that at some point during the, you know, zoning regulations, when you talk about the height restrictions in the downtown business district. And I think that's how you can also frame scales to make sure.
So can we have an explanation when it says scaled, and have something in parentheses to explain exactly where we're coming from on that?
Absolutely. I think that's a wonderful thing to have in the zoning regulations, because that's where those definitions, if in the beginning, in the glossary in the zoning regulations, there's a ton of information with regard to definitions of terms. I think that that is a great place to put that. I mean, I certainly would advocate that that's exactly where that goes.
I'm set.
Ziggy, acceptable there?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so everybody's comfortable with the total part of, that we've talked about on number two, mineral extraction. Mel, you want to?
Yeah, Neil, basically, one of the things, you know, way back when the planning commission had its first public hearing, or in advance of that, or at the time of, that warning went out, a copy of our plan went to Addison County Regional Planning, and it is obviously the intent of the planning commission, I'm sure the city council, is for this plan to eventually seek and obtain so-called regional approval. You know, there's actually another public hearing. The way the process works, this, once the city council adopts this, this plan, you know, in its final form, that document goes to regional planning, and they have a review, and they have a public hearing, if you can imagine that. And one of the things that we've had Adam do for us is to make sure that we've hit all of the statutory points. And one of the things, and I can see how this would be, would be an oversight, I mean, the city of Virgin's, you know, mile and a quarter, mile, mile and a half, you know, we're not the granite mines of Berry here, so we generally don't get involved with extraction, extraction of natural resources. But it is a required, it is required that we have this, it is required of all plans that we have this. And so Neil worked with, with our consultant after she'd got her, gotten their final pay and worked up some language, we blame them, it was really their oversight, we hired them to make sure that they covered, covered all the bases. So anyway, this is some language that is required, isn't a specific language, but we have to have language relative to extraction of, of natural resources, so.
But I see it says a commercial extraction and process.
That's correct.
All right.
So, we talked about that.
Sure, mine.
Okay.
So like, let's say if you were, if you were, if somebody was, had a lot and they were going to build a cellar hole or whatever, and they have excess dirt, you know, that excess dirt to go somewhere else, that's not, that's not to be interpreted to be commercial extraction. They're building a house, they're not in the business of, of selling topsoil.
Okay, so it just means?
That's the difference.
And do with a commercial.
Correct.
Right.
I just have to grab this on the screen.
Yeah.
I mean, that's where he's coming from.
It's like the church, people were bringing in their dirt to widen the trailer, widen the parking lot down on Water Street one time. And, you know, and somebody was complaining about it. Where's that dirt coming from? Why are they doing this? Why are they doing that? I don't know where the dirt was coming from, but, you know, along, this is what I was, just make sure we don't want anything to go in with something like that. And then when down here was built, the retirement home.
Right.
We were hauling dirt, the city was bringing dirt and giving them dirt to fill in places there.
This is really, this is about commercial.
Right, that's what I just want to make sure the commercial.
That's what it's about.
Okay.
What's the definition of, how would you define commercial? What constitutes commercial?
Selling it?
Well, for example, when Bill put in Wow Toys, he had dug the bank, Bill Houston, he had dug the bank, back there, set up the dirt, sold off the stone, and sold off the topsoil.
That's okay.
That's okay.
Because he's, that's related to site development. What Bill couldn't do would be to not build Wow Toys and start selling, and, and his, his operation would be selling dirt.
Directly.
That's what he couldn't do.
Okay? So we're good with that? And last one on this memo is on page 92, and recommendation.
Yeah, that's just the, that's the add-on, that's the add-on policy.
Yep, okay, never mind. Yep, all right, so that covers that. Now we gotta go to the memo, April 20th? Or is there any, is there anything here on April 20th memo that we did not cover?
Yeah, I think it's the July, I think it's the July 15th.
Whoops, wait a minute.
Is, I think that we've gone over most everything in July 15th, but we should just skim that for sure.
I thought I had everything, but I grabbed the wrong one there. Okay. Yep, I grabbed the wrong one. Okay, July 15th, let's skim through it.
This was the result of the planning commission's public hearing, and, yeah, I know that, I know the city council has, has reviewed this, but maybe should just quickly run down through, I mean, some of them, there's no, some of them involve really no change, but some of them are just some corrections and clarifications.
Okay, item number one, maintenance standards. You saw that, you see the public input, and you see the planning commission's recommendation. Open for discussion. I see, Zig, I may have a second copy if I can dig far enough. I thought I brought, I thought I had another one.
So can I, can I start by, with a point here?
This was, this was, the meeting that was had, as well as the items that we just discussed, actually have changed even some of the responses to these, to these issues. So this, this document is actually sort of in a, in a sequence. There first was the public hearing, we got the feedback, we responded to the feedback, we had your hearing, we got feedback from you, and we actually addressed a lot of this in, in our own next meeting, which was held last Monday night. So some of the responses to this are not the positions that this board is advocating at this time. So the, you know, in, in the sequence of events, this happened before we actually got together last Monday night and re-discussed a bunch of this stuff.
We're still not advocating for maintenance standards for number one.
Right, yeah. Basically, in short, I can go through this pretty quickly, Michael. Obviously, the first one really doesn't apply, it was because of the testimony that somebody came, something that we really can't do. Item two on historic neighborhood districts, that has been corrected by adding the, this intent language. It's not the intent, so you've already, you've already seen that. Relative to number three, this is the one that deals with Matt Jerry, and there actually was an oversight on one particular use, and the board obviously wants to correct that. However, the planning commission does not, does not recommend some of Matt's proposals relative to retail instructional facility and whatever. So, in essence, it, it, you know, you've heard from Matt, they've, the planning commission's heard from Matt, you've heard from Matt. Also, what, what some of you haven't heard from is, you know, a year or two ago, the planning commission actually had a special meeting inviting property owners from City Hall all the way out to, to Virgin's Animal Hospital. And there really is a, there, you know, there really is support for the residential limited business district and the, and the new section out there. However, there is not support for making that residential slash limited business too businesslike. It's not, they do not want it to become like the Central Business District with retail. And so, you know, this is the planning commission's recommendation that they do add the uses so that it does jive with, with the current zoning regulations, but not be, be making those additions that Matt was, has been requesting.
Should we talk about whether we accept what the recommendations of the planning commission is at this point, so that we can find a stance, that way we don't have to Is, are people in favor of the planning commission's recommendations?
This stops right at the end of the hospital, right? And back this way.
That's correct. Or, well, there's two, there's actually two, there's actually two areas of residential slash limited business district. It runs from City Hall to, I'm going to say Moncton Road. And then it picks up at, and, I'm not, I think it picks up considerably after that, I think. Considerably after that, I think, I think it's quite a ways out. It includes, it's not that large, I don't think, Neil, I think that it's.
There's a map in the plan here that actually shows this, which is, well, that would be helpful.
Yeah, it, it actually includes, it starts at Matt's, so that.
Includes Dr. Simmons in the law.
Yes, it includes Matt's property, Tracy Webster's property, and then across the street picks up Dr. Simmons' property, and Helen Preston's property. And basically, it's a, it's created that district in recognition that it, you know, that it, it does a but, that industrial slash commercial district over there. So, you in essence have central business up here, limited business district for ways, medium Nancy residential, or actually historic neighborhood district. And then it goes to limited business, including Matt's house, Helen Preston's, and Dr. Simmons, and then it goes into the, into the Gateway District.
So, to just, we're not, we're not advocating any change in what we currently have, and that just happened about a year ago. I mean, you passed the residential limited business district amendment change in about a year ago, maybe a year and a half ago, when it came to our attention that there needed to be some things to address some property owners' concerns down there. We did that, and this isn't advocating for any derivation from what we did the first time. We're asking you to keep it the same as what you just did.
Are we in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Good.
The next section deals with the Otter Creek Basin District, and for some reason, Neil, I didn't really think that this was a change, but it makes reference to, the subcommittee was not part of the original document, the concept of the Otter Creek Basin Subcommittee?
It's in the appendix.
Okay.
It's not, it's not in the.
Okay, we wanted to, so you brought that from the appendix and put it into, so it was in the appendix, and so the plan to make that clear is to get it into the plan itself.
As a policy.
As a policy.
Yeah.
And we talked about that at the last meeting, that basically the planning commission or a subcommittee, the planning commission, would be the.
Basin.
The Basin Committee.
Everybody's okay with that? If anybody is not okay with any of these, please make it known so that Joan can identify what our intentions are.
The next one about safety and walkability, that, actually, there's no change there, Neil, right?
No changes there.
I think there was a statement about wanting to make sure that there was a lot of emphasis on safety and walkability, and Neil did a little search to find out that we've actually covered it in about 12 different areas, so there's no, there's no need for any change there. Central Business District, we just talked about that, that deals with the language that you discussed earlier in this meeting. And then the, the last area dealing with the Opera House, we actually looked to the Opera House Board, they actually came to, they came to the hearing and provided the board with some, some additional language, and the planning commission incorporated, in essence, is recommending to incorporate the Opera House Board's language into the document.
You should read that before we ask for if you support it or not.
So, could, could you, what was the goal of the board in putting that language in there?
I think they wanted, I think a part of it was to clarify really all of the efforts that have gone into the Opera House, the importance of the Opera House, and, just more detail, it's just greater detail.
It, it doesn't commit the city to doing anything in, in terms of, I mean, anything really. It just says that the city values the Opera House in terms of a public function space, and it talks a lot about the benefits that it brings to the city. Really, it's about the Opera House being able to use this document a little bit as a fundraising tool to get grants. They're looking for, they're looking for some sprinkler systems for the building. Being able to point to this kind of language in the town plan makes, you know, brings some weight to it.
The next one about the Northern Gateway District, the board, her testimony from Jackson Evans, you know, you know, some concern about, about the Gateway District potentially overcompeting with the downtown, and so there was some, just some fine tuning of that language to, in essence, call for that area to, when it's developed, that it's, that it's developed with distinct qualities and historic integrity of the city, so that it actually is a part of the city and not, not, in essence, a totally separate downtown out there that actually.
So it would be together.
That it fits.
Because I get the feeling when he made that comment that all of a sudden we're going to have separation here again, and it just didn't make sense. You know, like, if somebody comes in with retail and, and everything is filled up, it's just too big for anything here, I wouldn't want to turn it away, you know, if they could go out there and do that. I, I think anything in Virgin's, within the, you know, we had concerns with being in Ferrisburg all the time, but anything in Virgin's, to me, you can't help, help anyone, and even in some, down in the shopping malls in Ferrisburg, people come, then they drive through Virgin's. I just don't want the segregation of him, had concerns of having a retail store out there that might have hurt the downtown. I don't believe that would.
There was a lot of discussion about that, and we actually had a separate meeting eight months ago, maybe, I don't recall specifically, but we actually had a really, a, a good discussion with a number of business owners, and, and property owners in the Northern Gateway, in what we are proposing to become the Northern Gateway District. And got a lot of feedback both ways on that, Zig, I gotta say that there were a lot of people's concerns that, that, that we, we not detract from businesses that are downtown, that there are businesses that we value that are in our downtown that we wouldn't want to see undue competition from out there. That's one sort of end of the spectrum there, and then there was the other, which was your point that we heard, and I think we tried to do the best we could to try and, to recognize both of those spots. It's, it was, it's a difficult, it's a difficult way to go about meeting the needs of two distinct groups that had very different opinions, but we tried to, to create a district that allowed for businesses and, that support the look, the feel, and, and the, and the existing businesses in our, in our community already, I mean. So, I, I do think there are businesses, it was brought to our attention anyway, that people felt there are businesses that could go out there that could hurt existing businesses, longtime existing businesses, and that wasn't the goal of that, of, of that sort of development out there. That can be argued surely at the time of an application, but, yeah, we, we heard, we heard both kinds, both sides of that in our public hearing there.
Any other concerns, questions, Randy?
Well, the thing is, is that competition to a point is good. And if we're limiting, but I'm going to throw this out there, that say that somebody wants to put, like they did in Middlebury, put a Sears outlet store out there, and they'll have, they could have potentially clothing and appliances and stuff like that in there. My, I guess my feeling is, is the people that say clothing, if people that want to shop at Tim's Store, they'll shop at Tim's Store. The people that can't afford what Tim is selling wants to shop at a less expensive place, we're denying, are we denying them that ability to have it right here in town?
I think, I think given the current economic climate, we don't have a whole lot to worry about.
Well, yeah, but I mean, it's still one of those things you've got to.
I, I would say, I, I would say this, and I, I own a couple of businesses, wouldn't bother me in the least. I mean, to me, businesses that can't compete, they deserve to go out of business, in my book. And I, you know, when I first opened, went out on my own, I got some pretty good advice from a guy who'd been in business a long time, and he told me, he said, wake up in the morning, put the key in your door, and turn the lights on, don't worry about what anybody else is doing. Advice has served me pretty well for about 10 years. I would, if somebody opened a shoe store out there, I'd, I'd, I'd get to work trying to figure out how I could do it better, to me. It, it doesn't matter to me. And I think that more from the, I, I mean, it's kind of an age-old question, you know, in terms of if you look at like mom and pop hardware stores, there are none anymore. And there's a reason. And that reason is, is changing consumer demand, and that's just reality, and, and you're never going to change reality. You know, there's specific categories of merchandise that I don't carry at my store because I can't compete, and I, I don't even bother, you know? I'm not going to knock my head against a wall. And so, to me, you know, it, it would be kind of like, people do this, you know, people do this in the shoe business, you know, they obsess over things that they have no control over. There's, there's all kinds of categories of product that's readily available, many, many other places. I don't carry it. Why? Because I can't, I can't compete at that, at that same level. And I guess the point that I think that Randy's trying to make is that the, you know, given the opportunity to have something in Virgin's as opposed to having it over the line in Ferrisburg, or Middlebury, or wherever else, I'll take it in Virgin's, I don't really have a concern with it. I mean, I can't speak for anybody else downtown, but that's how I feel, you know, as a business owner. Plenty of opportunity.
I didn't mean to cause the world to open up a nest here, but I, I think that we would be limiting, I know, I shouldn't have been at the meeting, so I guess I should talk through all my comments. This is, I, I didn't high-five, in my little sort of mind, that we were going to allow some sort of retail, retail businesses out there. I mean, other than what's there.
And, and we are.
Yeah.
And this, I mean, the total, total list includes specialty retail stores, restaurants, galleries, studio offices, restaurants, personal service, instructional service, and similar uses. And so, there is a, I mean, we're just saying, add, add some additional ones.
Yeah, this was, this was the comment that was brought up at the meeting, and that he, his, the, the public citizen's input was that I'm afraid of that happening, and this is the response to that, in addition to what's in the, in the document.
And, there's also a, you know, in the overall land use policies, there's one that has to do with formula businesses, which just has to do with, if I can remember correctly, undergoing a comprehensive community and economic impact review, which includes examination of traffic scenic and historic resources, tax revenue, city services, employment, central business district, and the character of the city. So, if we're getting something larger out there, a proposal for something large that looks like it might, that it's a formula business, there will be required to go through a more thorough review.
So, where this began for me, we were given a gift as a community, I think the city of Virgin's was, with the Ferrisburg proposal of the, of the development on the former.
Roadhouse.
Roadhouse property. And, and the gift that we were given was the fact that I, one of the, one of the things that I kept recalling was the fact that we had, we have the ability to have this conversation without actually having the application in front of us. And so, we have to have a hard conversation, and we did many times, about what that means. And so, what we found in the community is there isn't a consensus one way or the other. There are people, like I said before, that, that are all for any development, bring it in, it's good for our, tax base, it's good for the community, and there are people that are worried about certain types of development. So, what we did was stay away from that for the most part, and to talk mostly about what David and everybody says they like, which is design standards, to say, you know, we don't want, again, out there even, a, a really unsightly building to be put out there, but if you're going to put out, say, something that is a formula business, we should take a look at it and make sure that it comports with what the community sets as standards. It shouldn't look like this, but if the community says it should, you know, somehow complement the, the look and the feel of the rest of our community, that, that is, that is good. I wouldn't want to see a 60,000 square foot store put out, it's unlikely it's ever going to happen, as David says, but I wouldn't want to see something huge put out there that, that, that doesn't support the way, you know, the rest of our community exists. That's the sort of language that we try to craft in that, in that policy, which is to say that we didn't really come to a conclusion on what should be out there as far as, but we, we hopefully, in, in the recommendation here, propose the buildings reflect the local settings, and then can be demonstrated to fit in contextually. That's sort of that additional language to try and appease that person's concern that it would detract from that. So, again, as, it, as we did on a number of things, even in our board, there was some significant disagreement about what that should look like, but we tried to find a compromise, and we actually unanimously voted that piece in without, without issue as a board, which to me says that we had a pretty broad range there. It was something the community as a whole could support as well.
Okay, I'm fine.
Randy?
Anything?
No.
Chris?
David?
The last section is the one that Joel Kluppenstein brought up, feeling that the language that, that the planning commission had relative to industrial uses was, was unduly restrictive. And so, basically, the, I think the, the board just totally agreed with that, once they, once the board took the, took the magnifying glass out and looked at it, it really was unduly restrictive. And so, they actually took that paragraph, which was trying to accomplish two things at the same time, and split it into two areas so that, you know, it does allow, you know, it, it is okay for, you know, pesticides and herbicides, I mean, we have, they're in stores, I mean, they just need to be, they just need to be properly managed, so it's too bad that Joe, I don't know that Joe has, I'm sure Joe has read this, and hopefully, this is what he was, he was driving at. Let's, let's hope. I, I think the planning commission job did a good, by, by splitting that policy up into two policies made, made a lot of sense, it just makes the document read a lot better.
Any discussion? None?
Let's make the motion.
Before we go and ask for a motion on the plan, I would ask one final time, are there any other items that have not come before this review that people would like to bring to the table at this time? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion to go on to the next phase of setting the Virgin's municipal plan for a public hearing.
I think we go September 25th. Obviously, Neil, we got, we have some work to do here to get this thing ready. At this level, it's, you know, when the planning commission has its public hearing, there's a 30-day notice requirement, it's just the way the law reads, you know, at, at your level, that 30 days isn't required, because there's, the reason why we have the 30 days on the front end is because it has to go to regional planning, has to go to the state, has to go to our budding, the chairs of planning commission of our budding towns. That's the only time that, that actually is required to occur. So, in looking at our calendars, Neil, I mean, to have a, September 25th, do I have the right date? Is that a Tuesday?
September 25th is a Friday.
And that's not, that's.
September 22nd is a Tuesday.
That's the fourth Tuesday, in fact, city council night.
Okay.
Do you like the 28th, 29th better?
Yeah, I think that, I think the 29th is better. I think that the other date is probably a little ambitious. Yeah, yeah, I think we need to go with the 29th.
So, our meetings in that month would be the 8th and 29th?
And the 14th.
No, the 14th is a Monday.
It's a hearing, that's, that's the.
And, and we're going to talk about that in a minute.
But, so, yeah, I think that's fine, 8 and 29, and have the hearing on the 29th. That gives Neil and I a little reasonable room to, to incorporate all of this.
Let me make that motion. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Ask for discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
This is a seven o'clock public hearing.
Um, yes.
Up here.
Yes, we'll have to clarify that all is available.
Right.
This is on September 29th.
Yes.
September 29th.
Thanks, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anybody need to use the facilities? So, we take a brief break? Yeah, okay, we'll just take a five-minute break, and, Neil, go ahead and, and come back as soon as possible. I guess, sir. I guess. Take care of the first three items altogether. Warrants have been around, I believe everybody's signed them. I'd ask for, I'm going to get the date on the minutes.
Just 11.
Thank you, Chris. I have a second.
Yep.
Randy, second. Any omission errors or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Review budget. Mel?
Well, I see Joan has attempted to correct, I'll say, the tax number. I'm not sure we quite have that right, but at least we, the school payment there, Joan, has been adjusted out of there.
Yeah.
Adjusted it out.
Yeah, there's got to be still something off.
Well, I think the D-tax is going there.
Oh, it is?
It's got to be.
Oh, last year's.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, okay. What Joan is saying, obviously, we'll have to, we'll have to look at that, because really what should happen is is that the D-tax really should be going into deferred, it actually gets booked to deferred and charged against deferred. But anyway, we'll get it.
I think that's an auditor thing they do.
Yeah, we'll get it squared away. You know, one of the things, Melissa, just to let you know, Melissa Wright, Joan's assistant, I, we have a bit of an inter-office challenge here going on. And obviously, she collects a lot more clerk fees than I do zoning fees, so it's all about the percentages, right? So we're both, you know, trying to, trying to hit our targets. Neither of us made our targets last year. I tried to convince Melissa that 90, 92% gets you an A in high school, but it really doesn't get you anything in the real world. You have, you have to get 100. So we're trying to get some, get some competition here. But obviously, it's still, it's early, you know, it's, we're only in the middle of August here. We're only a month and a half into the, into the year, so it's, you know, we're too early to draw any, draw any really conclusions from this. One of the things I will tell you, if you, once you get down to police fines, I can tell you that there, you'll notice reflecting a fair amount of effort on speeding tickets and the like. We've actually have had some problems in certain areas of town, and we're addressing those. And I can, I can tell you that in, in talking to the officers, because of the effort that's been going on over the last couple of months, you know, speed is better in town. That's what happened, you know, at first, when you're, when you, when you don't have a lot of, you know, speed, you know, traffic control out there, what happens is people drive faster and, and we get complaints. And so it actually is working. We can tell really by the, by the number of tickets that have been issued recently have been lower than they were in the last, in the last couple of months. So it shows that, that visibility out there, and it is, is working. I don't know, Joan, if we've got back the contracts from, from the towns. We sent those out. I mean, maybe those, and we signed them and they went out. I'm not sure if that they're back.
Some have come back, not all of them for sure, but some have.
Because the payment, the first installments are due on the first of September, so I don't know if Joan has collected some dollars from them, but anyway, there was a cover letter explaining, you know, the contracts, how the calculations were done, where all the numbers were coming for, coming from. So, you know, obviously, that communication that I promised everyone, we've, we've done that for them.
I did have a call from Ferrisburg asking about the recycling. Are they going to get a bill for recycling?
Yeah, they're going to get a bill for recycling. That's on my list of things to do. That's all I got for that.
Does anybody have any questions of Mel when it relates to budget? Any budget items?
Remember, we talked about possibly doing something different with the recycling?
I do want to do something different, Zig, I just haven't had the time to attack it. I do think there's a, a way for us to, to restructure that with Casell, and I just, I just need to find some time to get together with them, and I need to do it sooner rather than later, because obviously, if we don't do anything, you know, I know I only, I think I only budgeted $60,000. If we don't do anything, the bill's going to be around $65,000. So I've got to do something about that structure to get that back in line. So that's, that's my motivation. But I have not had an opportunity to, to dig through that and figure out what, what changes we can, you know, we can make. One of the things that we're, that I also want to look at is the backup continues to be a problem there. And I almost want to look at location as to whether or not, you know, I really wonder if we, we shouldn't look at operating this kind of through our wastewater treatment facility as opposed to out there on West, right there on West Street. I, fortunately, the neighbors have been really good to us, but, you know, it really has quite an impact on a budding property. So I want to, I want to look at, I want to take a look at location as well, and, and look at flow. And it might make sense to move the operation. It was at, it was originally at that location because we used the compactor that was tied to the, to that building. That's why it's there, all right? We don't use that compactor any longer, so therefore, it doesn't have to be there. It could conceivably take a route, you know, into the wastewater treatment plant. As a matter of fact, on Wednesdays on occasion, it's been problematic for the water district. You get cars backed up on Canal Street, and people want to go pay their water bill, and they aren't there to do recycling, and they're caught up in traffic. So there is some, you know, certainly some reasons to take a look at that operation and see if it might make sense to have a different, a different location.
There is a way to reroute the traffic.
Through that, through the, through the treatment plant.
Through the treatment.
So we're going to, we're going to look at that. The other thing I can tell you, down the road, we, we are going to have to do something different with our salt handling. And we're going to have to have a new building at some point. It's not critical, but at some point, you know, that building is tired. And when we do that, I mean, we're storing half of our salt in Walt them, which is, which is okay. You know, fortunately, Robin Jackman is, you know, we've worked out arrangement with Walt them, Virgens working okay. But, you know, but obviously, you know, if we're going to build the facility, we would, we would build it. That would take, take care of us. And so that land is going to be used up, probably a little differently down the road again. And I've talked to the public works guys, you know, it's not, you know, it's been on a list of, of, you know, wants, you know, to do something about our salt shed for, for years. And again, at some point, you know, we really are going to have to bite the bullet on that, on that building, so. So it's just something we're looking at.
What, what has been done at the fire station that almost half of that's been spent?
The dehumidification equipment has been put in. One of the things that I'm sure you noticed, Christine, when you go down in that basement, as soon as you walk in there, the humidity is just absolutely terrible. And we've had mildew problems in the, in and around the building. So we evaluated that and, and put in dehumidification, dehumidification equipment. We actually located it in, in a, in a utility room down there. And so the humidity in that building was running at, you know, 67 to 75%. Obviously not good, and so now it's down in the 40. And I, I actually haven't been back, Mike, I don't know if you've.
I was down there last night mopping the floor, getting ready for Saturday morning, and it was 83 degrees in that room. We may need to have somebody figure out, yeah, how to do some adjustments. It was, it was cranking out some humidity, but.
Okay. How was the humidity? How was the humidity?
Uh, I didn't notice. I just noticed it was 83 degrees in there. I thought, holy cow.
Well, it's not air-conditioned, and I would, and it probably won't be air-conditioned.
No, I'm not looking for AC, but I'm not looking, we may not have, our fuel supply may drop in half this, this year if that thing is going to crank, crank that temperature. I don't know. We, I think it needs, I should have mentioned that before now. I didn't mean to throw a surprise. But no, I just, it didn't come to mind until you just mentioned it. It's like, oh, no. Okay. Any other budget items? Committee reports. Ziggy? Let's have a crack to barrel. Surrounding towns.
We can try it again.
We have, and I got to get the guy's contact information, but Mr. Heath, who was at our last council meeting, he, he works in Washington, he has something to do with some economics group. And I mentioned to him about having a crack to barrel, and Ivana's husband is, does some stuff with economy. And so I asked them both if they'd be willing to come and spend us a few, few minutes with us, and the surrounding towns to talk about, you know, some, what could we do, change the way we work, or doing something different. And they said they'd be more than happy to give us some time at no charge. So along with that, I've been having email problems getting in touch with Tom O'Brien, but he's, he did finally, through Sally Bujie, did get an email to me saying that he'd be willing to come, but he'd like to meet with me prior to that. We talked about, you know, I've already talked about the busing issue.
Right.
We can't, so there, there's some stuff there that he'd be more than happy to come and talk with us. So, yeah, we can put it in, you and I can kind of work on an agenda and see about getting some. September's filled up pretty good. The only thing that's looking good right now is Saturday, the 26th. I don't know how it's looking for you. That's real close to my wife's birthday, so I have to be careful. But maybe we could use the fire station that, that Saturday morning. Think it over, get in touch with me, see if that works, okay? Gives us some time to get some information out. Plus, we got to, I got to get going on some other stuff. We want to do another haunted forest this year. Randy?
I, yeah.
Are you wishing we were shoveling snow yet?
Long, long been. I went to the graduation for Job Corps a week ago, a week ago Friday.
Yes.
A week ago, and on the, actually, two weeks ago, on the 14th. Marvelous job. I think they had 285 students that graduated. Only about 70, between 60 and 70 were there actually to receive diplomas. They did a good job. I mean, they had, they've had several of their students placed here in the, in the surrounding areas for jobs and stuff like that. So they're doing a good job. That was, that was nice, and then I have no, nothing else to report.
I have been going over every couple, two or three weeks to meet with the students, and I always ask them their name and where they're from. I'm seeing a definite increase on in-state students, which, which is, meets their, helps towards their goal. They needed to do that. There was a situation that did happen within the city that was believed to be the cause of some of the students over there. And Mr. Stings closed the campus down, and nobody got to leave. So he is a definite go-getter and will take action. So if anybody has any issues, you know, bring it to our attention. And Tony's met with Mel and talked about some stuff, and so we, he's a real asset over there.
Yes, yes, very good.
And he wants to work to become more involved with the community, so. And I did get to meet the lumber guy over there.
Oh, Jeff?
Yeah.
Okay.
You tell me what you want, maybe we'll connect. David?
I'm planning on having a meeting with regard to the basin in the coming week, and I'll be getting emails out on that to everyone, and I will copy everyone in the council. Certainly, everyone's welcome to attend.
I actually went down Sunday night and did some walking on one side, but I, I see some great potential there because there is footage on both sides.
Exactly.
That can be added, so.
Yeah, I've, I've gone down there and taken some measurements, you know, rough measurements, just to try to get things organized on paper. And I think that, again, there is some potential down there. And again, in keeping with the, the scale of what we would like to see, and, and keeping in, in mind that whatever we, whatever we do down there should not add to the, the tax burden of the city. You know, I'd at least like to see it revenue-neutral, and I'd, I'd even like it to see it make some money.
Just, just to let you know, I did get some numbers off my brother. 2008, there was 254 sailboats that came in throughout the summer, and 404 power boats, a total of 658 boats. This year so far, we're running a little bit behind, but that, the summer's not over with, 244 sailboats and 376 power boats.
Yeah, the, the interesting thing is, I had an opportunity, I was over across the lake, having dinner, and had an opportunity to talk to a gentleman who was down from Montreal, who was actually involved in the, in the marina business. And, and it's kind of interesting. I mean, the, the upper end of the business, which is most of the folks that we see on there are cruisers, their business has been very resilient. And apparently, those folks, regardless of what goes on with the economy, they've still got money to spend. And, you know, and, and again, I mean, we've all talked about it before, and it's certainly getting to be more well-known, but that's kind of the best-kept secret on the lake, you know, the, the dockage that's available here. I'm usually out on the lake on, on, not so much this summer because it rains. But, you know, you turn the, the radio on, and it's all you hear, you know, is the, the Canadian boat traffic, you know, talking about Virgens, so.
Well, the different conversations that I've had on the, on the large boats that I've been on this summer are definite. They're, we're known from California.
Sure.
People have, have said, if you go up to Lake Champlain, you've got to stop at Virgens. And that was, you know, and there's other people, especially, like you say, Montreal. And as I mentioned in a previous meeting, there's even a website about boats and traveling the, the lake and where, places to stop, and, and there's some locations that are mentioned, and Virgens is one of them. So we got some good publicity.
Definitely do. I, I think that, you know, in, in the future, there's also an opportunity in terms of broadening the, broadening the reach, so to speak. And again, you know, not, I, I certainly don't envision anything like, you know, the Burlington waterfront down there. I don't envision, you know, a pump-out station or gas pumps or any, you know.
You may have to think about that.
Well, you may, yeah, yeah.
Because there's part of the spread fun, I don't know if, you've talked to him about it.
Exactly, and we may or may not, you know, I mean, I looked at it, and it may or may not make sense. I mean, I don't know. But certainly, you know, there is some opportunity there. But, you know, we're not as well-known to the South. You know, that's just from what I hear from people. Up, along the upper reaches of the Hudson, in that area, Albany, Troy, that area, and there's a significant amount of boat traffic there. They tend to stay more local. This is kind of a nice place up here.
Where I'm located down on the lake, you can see the mouth, you see the boats come in and go out. This year, there hasn't been a problem because the water's been pretty deep. But it seems, I always wondered if there's any way that something could be put up, because when the sailboats come out, or when they go in, sometimes they come out and they swing a little bit, then they're getting hung up on this sandbar that's there. And usually, you know, there, people come along with their motorboats, try to pull them off, or their, you know, it seems like we could do something.
Markings, markings in navigable waterways fall under the jurisdiction of the Coast Guard.
Well.
And, and I've had some.
They've been there many times trying to pull these bigger ones out because, I mean, they're stuff.
And I've had some conversations with them. I mean, I've pulled people off that myself, you know. And it's kind of a catch-22, because, you know, this is at least what I've heard. If you mark a hazard, you, you, you know, the feeling at least, several years ago, the feeling was, we're not going to mark every hazard because then we've got a responsibility to somehow mitigate them. I don't know if that really makes a whole lot of sense.
Well, can you just, why say sandbar? You know, see if somebody's in a sailboat, then they realize, sandbar.
Lot of people have depth finders and charts, and as long as they rely on them.
Yeah, I, I mean, a lot of it.
I think last year, we had about, there was about 28, 29 of them. And some of them you couldn't move.
There's, and, and there's a lot of it, you know, a lot of it just is, is common sense. I mean, you know, there's a lot of people that, you know, they, they get in a boat, and they think it's like driving a car. You know, and I've, I've been down here in the basin, and I've told people, you know, I don't care what your chart says, you know, if you go another 100 feet, I can guarantee you, you're going to get hung up. And, and, and most of them listen, but every once in a while, somebody doesn't, and guess what? They get hung up. No. But that's a good, a good question. I mean, you know, we might, we might want to at some point, you know, get somebody from the Coast Guard.
Yeah, because we're directing traffic to come up to Virgens, you know, and it is a nice scenic view and stuff. But it's, I mean, you're going in, or you can come in out, it's right there. And then sometimes, when the wind blows just right, it does. And then sometimes, when the wind blows just right, it does, I actually see the sand move. I actually can see a couple of sandbars in front that they actually will move a little bit, so.
If, yeah, exactly, and I mean, you know, there might be an opportunity, you know, even on, on the website or something, you know, just a navigational tip. I mean, if people are exiting, you know, the mouth of the river, you know, if, if they stay away from that area, I, I mean, it's, it's okay. I mean, if they keep that, that green or blue, I mean, I see it as green, you know, people call it blue. If they keep that can to port, they're going to be okay. You know, if they end up over there on the wrong side of it, they're going to get hung up. There's, there's two feet of water over there usually this time of year.
This was a very far off when we had the storms come in. In fact, we had a co- a family that was stranded out there with four little children.
Yeah.
So, a bunch of us got in the boat and went out and got them, you know, brought them in and fed them, whatever, you know, but the boat had to stay there-
Sure.
-till the next morning, and it's just, this has happened many times, not so much this year. Maybe once, but last year was quite a few times.
Okay, looking forward to your mail. Chris?
Um, mine is about the stipends, but we're going to address it next month.
Yeah. Um, Chris did a great job working on some information on stipends, and we will move forward next month. Ms. Joan Anthony?
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on to old business, number A, five A.
Uh, nothing new to report there. The, the summary judgment's on my desk, and Jim and Runsey and I know we need to get that out by September one.
Five B?
Five B, I, I mentioned, I put a note in there, there's actually action that's going to be, is expected at their meeting in September, and obviously, if that action is an offer, then that'll land back on your table probably the second meeting in September, Mike.
Now, isn't there more land than what they're just talking about? Isn't there-
That's connected to this?
They, they actually do own more land, but I believe that the land that they're, that they're considering offering to the city would just encompass the swimming pool, the tennis court, and the skating rink, and the, the other eight point three four acres that they purchased from the Dickerson family many years ago. I, I, I don't think that goes to the city. That goes to the school, part of it is where their outdoor classroom is.
Right.
It may even include some of the athletic fields, so, that's my understanding, is that would be disposed of by, by going to the, and they actually, and the graded school also owns additional land because the Union Elementary School only obtained fourteen acres, so there's another piece in between the elementary school and the high school, and certainly, some of the athletic fields are on that land that's in between, so, in essence, they, they need, that, that piece, I'm not sure if that piece in between goes to one or the other, or split. I really don't know about that, but I, I, I don't see that coming to the city.
There's a little league field.
Little league field would, would not come to the city, that would stay on Union Elementary property.
Why I'm asking this, I know, maybe I'm jumping the gun, but remember one time we had to come in front of the voters about congregating all three schools?
Mm-hmm.
You know, and I had concern, because there's land out there, and I'd rather it would come back to the city of Virgin's before all of a sudden, we have Addison and, and Ferrisburg all involved and owning it also. I mean, that was just-
Yeah, what I-
You know what I'm, what I'm saying?
Yeah, and what I'm happy to do is, and for everybody, is, is to bring a copy of the map so that you understand the ownership. I, I did this recently for the school relative to the rope project, so that I know some of you, some of you know some of what Ziggy's talking about, but let me bring a map at the next meeting so that we can have it highlighted, so we can, you know, speak in detail about really what the graded school district owns, and, and how they, how they foresee splitting up that, their holdings.
Okay. All right, item number C, amendment to Virgin's Pan Water District Agreement and Lease.
Yeah, I think you've seen some earlier versions, either an earlier version or earlier versions. This is something that, you know, Christine and I worked on with, with John Demming. Of course, Mike, you, you attended a meeting with me and John and, and Chris Cook. This is the, this is the final language that we've worked out. I've mentioned to the board that, you know, what, what really happened over the years is certain connections happened, you know, without going through, may not have gone through proper procedure with, with their board. So, John Demming, he's the new, new superintendent at the Water District, and just felt, he, he made this one of his early-on tasks just to try to, try to clean up, you know, the connections and have it all, instead of having these understandings and, and, you know, unwritten understandings, I should say. And so, anyway, he and I worked together, and as I mentioned, Christine helped out as well, putting, putting this together, which really brings forth all of the, you know, all of the existing connections that we have with them, and basically neutralizes, neutralizes the dollars so that we, we stop sending bills to the Water District and they stop sending bills to us, except in the instance if this building here uses more than thirty-six thousand gallons per quarter. Generally, that will be enough. I will tell you, for the last seven years, there was a water bill that came here that for a while was paid by the, by the Opera House people, and then for a while, it was paid by, it was paid by the city. And there's been some, you know, difference of opinion relative to whether or not that should have ever have occurred or not, and this is really a, an attempt to put everything on the table, clarify all the connections, clarify the money, and we've got this now to be, to be, I'll, I'll call it bill-neutral, in that, you know, Joan isn't billing the Water District any longer, and the Water District isn't billing the city any longer for all of these connections, except that this building will be metered, and it's possible if we use more than thirty-six thousand gallons, we would, we would have to pay some dollars. We, we did do some history, and I can tell you that when the, when the, when the, when we had a water break here, obviously, we used some gallons, but also, when we had a tree out front that was in a lot of trouble, there was a lot of water being used for that. And the, the old agreement made reference to the city's agreement that it would not be excessive in its use, all right? Instead of arguing about what excessive means because it's in the eyes of the beholder, let's just set a, set a gallonage at thirty-six thousand gallons, and that's what it is. And if we use more than it, well, then we pay.
We, we, or the Opera House?
We is the city now, because under the lease agreement with the Opera House, we're responsible for utilities, except for the first thirteen hundred gallons of fuel oil, so we is we. Okay?
I'm thirty-six thousand, what I'm looking at.
Per, per quarter.
Per quarter.
Quarter.
Brother Matt and I have had some discussion.
Okay.
And we, we do remember way back when, when we were small, chillins.
Yeah.
And there used to be a bubbler, a water fountain-
Yeah.
...on the corner of the park, towards the Old Shepherd Place. We believe that the shut-off, if they ever, anybody wants to go digging and looking, is in the middle of the parking lot across that little pull-off, just before you turn to go down that first road.
Yeah.
We think the shut-off is somewhere in that, that parking lot.
Okay.
So, if they ever do want to do something different than what they're doing, it probably will require, require some digging and rerouting of lines.
Right.
I think they have the best of both worlds right now.
I like to deal with your brother.
Yeah, I do. It's, it's good, yeah. Yeah, so, nope, just, but we just wanted to mention that. Um, do we need to make a motion on this, or just sign it?
Yeah, what we need, what I would like to have is, if there's two clean originals, I'd like to have two copies of this signed by the board.
I have, I have a clean one. I have not written on mine. Okay, so you need just signatures, right?
That'd be fine.
Okay. David handed it out, what did I do with it? Right there. Thank you for delivering this tonight, David.
Yeah, I mean, it, it was, there, there wasn't a whole lot of change. I mean, basically, what I was tasked with is drafting a, a use and management policy that would essentially support the votes that the council has made, and maintain the ability for the council to say yes or no. So, it's two very small changes. In the second paragraph, I added the words "and for-profit entities," concern being that the way the document was worded, it specifically excluded, or it could be construed to exclude anybody there running a for-profit business. And additionally, down on the fourth paragraph, I added the words "any use by a for-profit entity shall be at the discretion of the City Council." Gives us a broad opportunity to say yes or no and impose whatever conditions. And that language supports the votes that the council has made.
Not to rush anybody, we've just seen this for the first time, but if you are comfortable in moving forward, I'd ask for a motion.
Make that a motion.
Randy's made the motion, do I? Ziggy made the second. Open up for further discussion.
Now, our for-profit entities would include our farmer's market, right?
Correct.
And it would include any hot dog stand, any ice cream stand, and-
It, it, it would, and, you know, in thinking this through, you know, originally, I started out with a long list, you know, and, and I thought, you know, that's not really the intent, my understanding of what the council's votes were, and from talking with folks, people want the opportunity to say yes or no. I think from an applicant's perspective, they might like to see something that was a little more specific, but I think from our perspective, you know, we want to maintain the ability to say yes or no based on whatever's occurring at, at any given time. And can't really have language that says, you know, shall not compete with an existing business, because just about everything that we have in there competes with an existing business. You know, nobody's selling snow cones, but does, but somebody's, you know, they're either going to have a cremium, well, we'd use a snow cone, probably not both, you know. So, that's my attempt to give us the opportunity that we've had in the past.
One, one thing I'd like to see, if it'd be possible, is add a time limit to review this policy, so that we do stay current, whether it be two years, fi- five years, or whatever the, the council is comfortable with. I just don't want it to slide, and, and I do agree with David that it would be nice to be able to be more specific, but then not cut our nose off and test the waters. We may have to go by experience and find that there's something that really isn't a, a fit, and then we will want to-
I, I, I looked at, I looked at some other examples, you know, of, of policies that are in place and where municipalities seem to get in trouble, is, in this instance anyway, is, you know, usually, when somebody gets in trouble, they're really specific and they'll say no. And, and then, you know, you, you can't do that, you know, I mean, it's like a zoning application. Somebody meets the, the requirements of the application, they get a permit. And so, based upon the way that we voted in the past, I think that this is something that covers it.
Yeah, the other question I'd throw at a mill, do you feel that, you, you had originally talked about some other form of drawing and/or-
I, I think that this, this policy, what David put together was, to an essence, make sure that what you did the other night jives with existing policy.
Exactly.
I, I think that our work is still in front of us as it relates to our whole peddler's license and application process, and that'll, that'll-
That'll be a separate-
That'll be a separate, take a separate course. I don't see, I don't see this as, as attempting to address that.
Absolutely not.
Okay. Excellent. Any other further discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you, David.
You're welcome.
And we talked about the discussion of stipends, but we're going to actually delay that until the next meeting, and we will get copies out to you now that we've gone through a couple drafts. City managers' report, Mel.
Yeah, very quickly, just two items. One, I, I, I'm so pleased with reporting to you, we send out nine hundred and fifty tax bills, and I have twenty left, and actually, there's three of them there that are, you know, one of them owes eight dollars and ninety-three cents, and another one owes thirty-two dollars and eleven cents, and somebody else owes fourteen hundred, fourteen dollars and one cent. So, we actually have seventeen, in my opinion, that we need to deal with. I sent, I sent letters out yesterday to these folks, which was really a follow-up to a June letter, requesting that they get current by the fir-, the, the first installment that was due. These folks didn't. The checkmarks, the people that got another letter, basically, you know, requiring them to be current by the end of the month, and I realize that it's only four more days or five more days to the end of the month, but I sent them a nice letter in June, you know, so that if they're saying that they didn't have enough time, they actually did. So, we actually are in very good shape. I mean, to me, obviously, we're, we're diligent about collecting taxes, but any, I'd almost challenge any municipality our size to, you know, that's sending out nine hundred and fifty bills, and in a, a month and a half into the, into the new year, with the, within effect, only seventeen delinquent taxes? That, that, that's pretty, that's pretty, that's pretty impressive. So, anyway, that's that news.
Especially with the economic times where they are.
Yeah, yeah. The other thing, we have, we have found fire trucks. I'm pleased to tell you, the, the group chaired by Jim Brewer, a lot of firemen, as Mike knows, have been involved with this effort. We've actually found the two trucks that, that we've been, been really looking for, and they're both coming from the same location, out of Alabama, I believe, and one of them, the, the heavy rescue vehicle here, which is a two thousand and two, this is a vehicle that if you were to go out and buy, this is a, this, this heavy rescue, keep in mind, the goal here was to get rid of a pumper, so this is really a heavy rescue pumper combination. And to be able to buy this truck new, you're looking at probably three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, this truck is a two thousand and two, the base price is one sixty-two, there is some equipment purchases that go on it to the tune of, you know, eleven or twelve thousand dollars. So, to get this one fully equipped, will probably run around one seventy-five, and when you, when you do the math, I do a little mathematical exercise, when you take a, a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar truck that you're going to operate for thirty years, and you calculate the annual cost of that, you know, some eleven or twelve thousand dollars a year, you take this vehicle here, which has got seven years off from its life, got twenty-three years left, hundred and seventy-five thousand divided by twenty-three, that equals seventy-five hundred dollars. So, I look at, what does it cost per year to have this? I have absolutely no problem with use. It's the only way to go, in my opinion, for a community this size, so this was a great, this was a great find. This truck here, this is the ladder truck, you know, our current ladder truck, the Seagraves, is nineteen sixty-seven or nineteen sixty-nine, something like that, old, old, not good, not good, not safe, but it's for sale.
You, you can't, stop it, Mel. You, you, you have to manufacture replacement parts for it.
This truck here, this is a seventy-five foot aerial. Keep in mind that the current ladder truck we have is a hundred foot, and obviously, dropping down to seventy-five, Mike expressed some concern, I expressed a little concern, and the department has discussed this at, at length. Actually, Middlebury is dropping from a, from a hundred footer down to seventy-five as well, obviously concluded, concluding that they really don't absolutely have to have a hundred footer. One of the things, by, by cutting down, you know, your, your ability to get to places becomes a heck of a lot easier when you go with a, with- becomes a heck of a lot easier when you go with a, with a truck like this. A 75-foot aerial truck, if you wanted to go out and buy one today, would be $900,000, all right? And let's say that that truck lasted you 30 years, so, and actually, ladder truck, I mean, if you really take care of them, you can get 40 out of them, but if you just use the 30, if you use the 30, spend $900,000, $30,000 a year on the truck. This truck here, this 1998, 11 years old, Jim Brewer, I can tell you, it was nice that we gave him a budget, because he was able to u-, use the fact that we only have X amount of dollars, and was able to get this truck, you know, for us at $225,000. So, when you do the math on this truck, you know, 225 divided by, you want to divide it by 19, if we're going to use the 30, you can tell that, you know, it's a significant, significant savings to us. So, so we're at $400,000, the, the voters authorized 450. You know, I feel, I really feel real good about, about these two fines, and I, and it really shows that, and I, I took the liberty to go ahead and sign these things, because it's my, it's my understanding that what the, what the, the city council and the fire department and Rennie really wanted to do is when you're, when you're out there replacing trucks, you need to be able to act fast. And so, what we did, what, what you all did before I came back here was went to the voters, did an assessment to find out, and did a plan, find out really what do we need, what, what's the right number that we can go to the voters with, and you did that. And the voters supported it to the, to the $450,000, which allows, allowed us to respond and respond quickly. So, when these came in, this one actually, the, the, this one I signed, I think, yesterday and emailed it to the guy. This one I, I signed probably a couple, a couple of weeks ago. So, anyway, this really puts us in, in great shape. These trucks, the, the prices that I've shared with you, they do all the painting, they do all the laddering, and they do the whole shoot and match, it's done. It's not like it gets here and now we have a bunch of work, other than there is some equipment, obviously some equipment purchases, so...
They're going to be red.
They're red, absolutely. Ralph Jackman's the chief, I think they're going to be red. So, anyway, that's that, Mike.
They did look at the blue one.
So, one of the things that I have to do very, very quickly, I think one of the trucks gets picked up on the 20, 20-something or other of September, 23rd or whatever, is obviously, I need to, I need to find some money, and what we'll need to do is get a, what's called a bond anticipation note, a short-term borrowing, and then obviously, we'll go through this fairly lengthy process to actually, you know, go through the bond sale and actually, you know, turn this into a bond. I'm assuming it was, I'm not sure how the voters, it was a 20-year bond, Joan, I'm assuming? That's what the voters approved? Yeah? But anyway, so anyway, the first step is to get these secured, you know, get them heading, heading towards Vermont, and, and I'll bring back a bond anticipation note to you, hopefully at the next meeting, if, if I can have it, get it turned around that quickly.
Do we go pick them up at their living room?
They fly, they fly us down.
They're going to fly us down, and because the people will be driving through other states, in other states, you're required to have CDL, class A, or class licenses, and there are members within the department that do hold those licenses, and, and we will figure out who's available.
It's quite a, it's quite a facility. I, I think they have $35 million worth of fire trucks. This is, this is a pretty substantial broker, that's what they do.
This, this guy runs his own ambulance crew for the city that they're in. They have a call, they set down their tools, they go on, on the call. If something breaks down, they even respond to fires. So, they're kind of a, their own little department within a, in the city, but, you know, and it was like, there's X number of trucks out there, go play. They're there, you take them, the one hap-, something happened to one of the ones that they wanted to try out or something, mechanics were on it in a heartbeat, and the guy says, "You got any questions? You go to the mechanics." Don't, you know, don't come to me, I'll talk about the money, but you go, work with the command, yeah, mechanics. So, they, they were great.
The other truck, obviously, is still, you know, remember we got the Public Works vehicle, went to, uh, you can't remember the name of the company, the, it's over my equipment, I know that's not it, but anyway, that one's in the, that's, that's in the works.
Mary.
Yeah, and that'll, and so that one will be coming back here very soon, and really, once all of these land, I mean, we really are set for, you know, I want to say 10 years.
We'll start setting money aside.
Correct, right. So, that's good.
Excellent. Thank you, Mel. Move on to item number seven. First one, the 7A, it's a request for approval for rolling place for malt, Gator malt beverages.
Make the motion.
Motion, do I have a second? David's second, yeah. Any discussion? It's benefit of the Virgens Animal Hospital. No, the location? What's, excuse me? Location is Virgens Animal Hospital.
Yes, not Virgens Opera House.
Excuse me. May have to take and make an appointment for my cat that day, I guess. Okay, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried? Pass.
I'm sorry, I had to get a few questions. Say anything.
David's second.
Yep.
Yep.
Sewer extension policy. Mel?
Uh, I think I mentioned this in my memo, Tom Deniker stopped by, he actually has stopped by my office on a, on a few occasions, and, uh, as I mentioned in the, in the memo, according to Tom, you know, he's, he's being, I'll say pressured, if not required, by General Motors to move the service shop portion of his business over to his new, new location on, on Route 7. And obviously, by moving that facility over there, the issue of sewer comes, you know, comes to play. You know, Tom, you know, thinks that it's possible to develop onsite sewer to accommodate his business, but, uh, obviously, uh, it's, you know, much, much easier, if you will, to, to be tied into a municipal system. So, what I told Tom that I would do was, would be to copy the, the policy that was adopted by the board back in 1994, which is, was in your packet, and, uh, this policy here, you know, did not include that piece of land. It included the, what is now the park and ride property, and it includes the land, a portion of the land that's in between the high school and Route 7. So, I guess, uh, you know, obviously, we owe, we owe Tom some kind of a response. I guess my, I can tell you that this policy here, there was a, there was a sewer extension committee established. It was comprised of some aldermen, a couple of members from the planning commission, I'd have to, I'd have to go back and, might have, might have been a couple of people at large. That would be my, would be my suggestion, that, you know, it's been, you know, it's, it's been a long time, you know, since this policy's been reviewed, and to me, it deserves a, a look in, in 2009 and have that come back to the council. You know, obviously, this was, this, the way this was written, it intended for Ferrisburg to have a, have a town vote. I don't know that their, their feelings remain the same today as they did back then, but, you know, I want to, right now, we have the, we have it in our charter that any sewer extension requires voter approval. To me, it would be, it would be helpful to have some kind of a guiding document. So, it's not about, necessarily about Tom Deniker, it's about an overall, an overall policy as to where, you know, where might we consider extending sewer to, and for what purposes, and what, what the compensation would be.
I thought, at the time when we did this, way, way back, was that, wasn't there a good study on this, and just this area that you had talked about is what we had come up with? Now, I know that Muzzy, was it, he owned it before Tom, he had approached the city several times, and he got denied.
He did, and Steve Miller was contemplating buying that and also approached the city. And, and again, it was, it's, the voters are the ones that have the authority to allow or not. So, I, I agree with Mel, that I think it's, it's due time to review, we shouldn't let policies or procedures go too, too far without stay, staying on top of them, and I think this is an ideal time to, that it's been brought forth, to, to open it for discussion and set up a committee. If nobody would have a problem, I'd actually ask for at least three, three volunteers to serve on that.
Who'd do that?
Chris? David? Ziggy? Thank you. Those are the three. Thank you. Um, and so, we won't take action on this tonight, other than, would you inform Tom that we are taking steps to look at the policy, and then, we'll see where, I don't, to give him, I don't want to give him any false hopes, but...
Yep.
I got, I got just a quick question. What is he going to do with the facility here in Virgens? Is he going to close it?
Uh, what he mentioned to me was the, the thought of converting it into storage, that's what he said to me, as some kind of a storage facility. Whether it be storage, or, or, he didn't talk, talk about, you know, splitting it up into, you know, mini-storage, that's what he mentioned to me.
Might not be a bad place for a, a boat, boat place. And, and one time he did say, talk about cross the road to Wheeling Deal in some fashion, because he knows that we're looking for a police station and thought that...
We were involved in that one, Chris.
Might be a fit, so...
Yeah, actually, I, I don't mind telling you, Tom, about the building, his, his building across, he actually has two potential tenants there. It's funny, Tom's saying, you know, "I, I had the building, you know, on the market for sale or rent for a year, and never had anybody knock on my door," and now he, now he has two people knocking on his door, so...
Excellent.
I suspect to have a, an application before the DRB, you're suing by one of the two tenants, either, either use that he, either of the uses are, are fine for that district, but he just does need to, he would need to go through a, a site plan review with the development review board.
Excellent.
Good.
More power. I'm glad to see places occupied. Okay, thank you, people, for stepping up, all that committee. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, can you hear me now? Verizon Wireless, I'm really not sure how, you know, how involved you all want to get with the details, a typical lease agreement, you know, with, with, with all of our cell companies are, are, you know, 15, 20 pages long, and so, let me just tell you the, the proposal that, you know, there, I think I shared, Mike, on some of the, some of the emails, maybe, maybe all of them, of the exchange of, of, an attempt to negotiate this deal, and it's not, this is not a done deal. What, what Verizon Wireless, they have looked at our tower, they've looked at the facility, their facility actually requires a small building, as opposed to some kind of a cabinet. The building out there would be around 12 by 20, that obviously would have to go through the development review board to get a permit for that. Their antennas would wrap around the, the, you know, the, the tower, I'm going to say about 10 feet lower than the series that you see wrapped around, I know you have three others up there, but there's, uh, there's a series of, of pieces that, of antennas that wrap around the building, and they would drop down about 10 feet and have a very similar, similar design. Their proposal, after various exchanges of email, have found its way to, to a $24,000 a year contract, which is very similar to the two contracts that you have with, with Nextel, and with Sprint Nextel, and Nextel Partners. So, what they've proposed is that they would pay us $2,000 for an option, which would need to be exercised within, within 12 mon-, 12 months, where they would go through their permitting and whatever processing they need to do, and then, within that 12 months, they would extra, in essence, elect to exercise that option, of which would be that, you know, $24,000. There's a 3%, a 3% escalator escalation clause in that, very similar structure to, to Nextel with a five-year lease with four, five-year renewal. So, it's been the practice with Nextel. I know that the earliest lease that was signed was fairly short-term, which, based on the leases that we have with Nextel, I sense that the city council is comfortable being in this business of long-term leases for the, the tower. Obviously, it's been a great source of money for us. It's been identified to be used for public improvements, it's been extremely handy for us to, to use that money as local shares towards, towards, uh, towards downtown projects or any cap-, any capital project. So, I think it's been a great, it's been a great program. It's funny, when I, I negotiated the first lease and, you know, thought it was a big deal, you know, that, you know, that we generated, you know, $12,000, $13,000 a year, and, and I come back and, you know, in essence, negotiate, which probably is the, the last, I think the, the tower's getting a little busy, and so probably that might be the last one, and when you put them all together, those four leases, and actually, the original lease that I, that I assigned, I think Joan had a note on there, that it actually is up for renewal in February of 2010. How ironic. Anyway, this has been a great, you know, maybe some people question the beauty of this tower or whatever, but I can tell you, it's, is a...
It's a cash cow.
It's a ca-, it's a cash cow. So, between these, this agreement, the other, the other three that are in place, and where that, that first one might land in February, you know, you're really, you're approaching $100,000 a year from, you know, from that facility. It's, uh, it's good.
Is there a deal?
It, no, that's, it's, no, no. So, like I say, I, I, that's the outline of the proposal, you know, what I, what I would like to do is, if you feel comfortable, if you want to see these 25-page things, I'm happy to, to burn paper for you, but if you're, if, if you prefer not to, that's the terms of the deal, a $2,000 option within 12 months, and if exercised, the first year rent of $24,000. I think they pay monthly, Joan, this, that's just the way that this would do, some of them pay annually, some pay monthly, this would be a monthly. So, what I would look for would be approval of, of this proposal and authorization for me to sign the lease on behalf of the city.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
So carried? We don't need to do anything there?
Well, what I did, that's, that's actually some, that, those are actually some warrants that didn't get included in your packet. I, I had to be out of the office on Friday, and Marguerite, there's actually one other bill that needs to be paid that will be offset with donation, obviously, is for the dance on Friday night with the Hitman, so, these are expenses that we, for Virgens Day, obviously, along with the, along with the chicken barbecue, expenses for employees and volunteers, along with the Hitman, so I just wanted to alert you to those, to those bills. Let's just hope the weather's good.
Um, actually, they said tonight that it was going to be okay, and, "Green friendly, bring your mouthwash and a spray bottle, and don't spray it on anybody else, but spray it around you, and you won't be bothered by mosquitoes." The stream. Okay? Have to clean the streets in town, or we get too much. Okay, so that's a little hint, picked up. Again, Mel mentioned Virgens Day, it's important that as many people get out, enjoy the day, especially enjoy the meal, they start serving at 1:00, I believe, so, um, come up. What Judy and I are looking for is some help with selling the tickets, Randy said he'd take a little bit of the time. Again, the, we've donated the bear, Randy donated the boat, Virgens has donated the bottle of wine, and it's in an effort, the, the money all goes back, there's, there's no expense, all the money goes back to the city to help defray any of the costs and stuff, wherever it's going to be best used. So, tickets are a little slow selling, but we got to Saturday and make a real crash run on them. So, um, that's one thing. Brought up last time about parking concerns, I still haven't heard into more, but we still, I know you've got lots on your plate, but you're going to look up that...
I did, you know, it's funny, I, I found, I still think there's, I don't have the right plan, because the plan that I found showed no parking on both sides of Green Street plan because the plan that I found showed no parking on both sides of Green Street all the way down, and I know that I had that modified, and so I don't have the right, I do not have the right set of plans at City Hall. So we're still searching for those, and we'll figure that out.
Okay, excellent. Behind me, I have three trophies, and not often do we get good news, but I take the opportunity to say the Virgin's Fire Department did the city proud. The taller trophy is the one that's, one of the two top trophies that you can get, and that was for sportsmanship. The other two, one is for what they call midnight alarm, which they did in 38 seconds. That's you put all your gear on, you're laying down, you jump up, put your gear on, and you go connect the hoses, and you turn the nozzle on, or the water on, you run to the end of the hose, and you knock a target down. And then the other one that they took first place in is portable pumps, and they did that in like 13 seconds. That's where you pick up a portable pump and a hose and a nozzle, and you run down, set it into a tank, you start the engine, and you lay the hose out, you connect the nozzle, and you knock a target down. It was comical because the guy that was on the nozzle was facing away from the target with a hose in one hand and the nozzle in the other, and he gets it tight, and before he could spin around, he had water, and it dead-on the target knocked it down. Closest one was two seconds behind him, so...
I'm sorry, I'm saying that was a different one.
Oh, yes, this was, I'm sorry, this was at the fireman's convention down in Bennington. And of course, they took great pride in showing their chief that night. So I guess I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
Did you share that award or that...
Cadet program?
Oh, 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 yes.
Share that, please.
I don't know how much that is for advertisement yet, but go ahead, Chris. You...
The county officers of the Addison County Fire Fighters Association met with that at the fire station on Monday night, and the county cadet award is going to be named after him now.
This is...
At the annual meeting.
This is a brand-new award that they're just establishing. So Ralph will serve on the committee, along with a past chief from Addison, and they will select the youngest cadet. So, okay. Ask for a motion to adjourn. Ziggy?
Aye.
Randy? So moved.